Good evening. All the Art of the City Council Study Session of December 2, 2019. Would you, would the clerk please call the row?
Abel.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Duwine.
Skilling.
Here.
LaBier.
Here.
Paul.
Vincent.
Here.
Vida.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm looking for my script here. Pardon me. I believe we have a presentation from the folks with Camp Paha. And would the representatives please come forward?
Hello. Thank you for having us. We always enjoy this part of our year as the Board of Friends of Paha. This year, we'd like to present a check to you, but first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about who Friends of Paha is and what we do. We are a nonprofit board. We started in 2003, and our mission and goal is to help support Camp Paha. We do that by offsetting financial burden for families by providing what we call camperships. So if a family would like to send their child to camp or their young adult to camp, for Paha in transition serves older young adults, then we will step in and provide a campership for that family so they can afford to send their loved one to camp. We do our fundraising through grant writing. We do a bunch of sort of social media, online fundraising, and we have a major fundraising event in July every year. So we will let, well, in your city newsletter, we let you know when that's happening, so you can look for those events if you'd like to support us more. But today, we're here to present a check for $43,769. This is the third year in a row that we have been able to fund every application we've received, so we're pretty excited about that and looking forward to continuing our work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vincent, would you read the...
Absolutely. In 2019, FOP awarded scholarships in the amount of $31,555, the greatest amount to date, supporting the participation of 24 campers. In 2019, Paha served a total of 93 participants in the seven-week program, and Camp Paha participated in trips that included a Rockies game, zip lining, and horseback riding, opportunities that many of the participants may never have experienced previously.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I don't have a wallet large enough to put this. As y'all can probably tell, I'm a rookie at this. Now, we'd like to have Andrea Doughty, CEO of the Colfax Marathon, to the lectern.
Before I start, do we have anybody from the Lakewood Fitness Freaking Fast Females here tonight?
All right. Are you Polly?
I am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For running really fast. Does anybody want to compete against her next year? Just checking. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're nonprofit as the Colfax Marathon is, and this is our 15th year we're heading into. We're very excited to be able to not only have 20,000 runners, but to also have over 200 charities that we can give money to. The Colfax Marathon actually gives $100,000 to charities every year through winning teams. And again, thank you so much, and I will try to repeat that name one more time. It's the Lakewood Fitness Freaking Fast Females, right?
That's right.
So their team actually finished in 3 hours and 36 minutes, 5 seconds, which gave them third place in the government division for women. And if you want to talk about how fast that your Lakewood employees really are, there were 1,300 relay teams competing for awards, 60 got awards, and Polly's team was one of them. So I just want to do a thumbs up, congratulations, because that is great fitness. So in addition to the money that we give out, $100,000, we also noticed that these charities are doing more and more fundraising every year, and over the last five years, they raised $2.5 million for themselves and their causes. And we're just very proud of that fact and very proud of the fact we can offer a platform that not only is for runners, but also for charities to be able to support their causes in a unique and a different way. So you earned, you're allowed to keep this, put this on your wall. Special Olympics will receive $1,500 from your team for running so fast, which is very, very impressive. So thank you so much. I also wanted to give a brief shout-out to your police, to West Mastro Fire and the city. The police have been fantastic over the last 15 years in terms of protecting and making this such a safe race for our runners. The fire department, it's been awesome to have these two ladder trucks with the big flag right there at Sheridan, really marking the entrance to the city of Lakewood, and they've done just such an amazing job. And then for the city, just being able to support everything we've done, you know, and have Vanessa and Robert here tonight from OED that supports what we do every single day, we really appreciate it. And I have a plaque for the city of Lakewood to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think my final thank you, and I almost forgot, and these are some of the most important people we have that really support our runners, is the Lakewood communities. To have them cutting up orange smiles in the glens and handing them out to runners. Nina Rockley and Rockley Music, I mean, what a phenomenal job they've done over 15 years really supporting our runners. And then we love the Morse Neighborhood Association in Two Creeks, who not only provide some fun for the runners that day, but also help make Colfax look spectacular as the runners come through your city. So thank you so much for everyone and everything they've done for us.
And the name of your team was?
Don't ask me. Lakewood Fast Ladies or something.
Freaking Fast Females, according to the check. Thank you very much. And now for the discussion item of the night, our study session topic, the Development Dialogue Follow-Up Zoning Issues Regarding Colleges and Universities. We have no staff presentation, but Councilman Skilling will introduce the topic.
So this is the study session, which is the follow-up to the committee meeting that we had back in July, July 9 of 2019. As with all of our Development Dialogue Committee meetings, it was very well-attended. We got very good reviews from that meeting, namely because it had a lot of folks, many of whom are probably here tonight, who attended that meeting. We had representatives from the neighborhood associations, residents themselves, and we also had CCU and its representatives participate. It was a long meeting. It was hours and hours of public comment to the committee. And in the committee, we do things a little bit differently. We don't have a three-minute time limit necessarily, and if there's some good back-and-forth going on and some debate, we certainly allow and encourage that, because that's how we, as committee members, learn the issues. Many of us were not around when this has surfaced in the past. Certainly, none of us were serving on this council back in 2003. And then the latest zoning change in 2012, many of us weren't here as well. So it was very informative for all of us, and I did thank CCU and its representatives, as well as Mr. Baker and his group, and a lot of the attendees, who provided, as I said, many hours of valuable information. So we have heard from the community. I have also provided all of the city council with minutes from that meeting. We only have half of council is on that committee, but now all of council is able to read multiple pages, and Laura Pemberton does a very good job of actually transcribing the back-and-forth among many of the folks who attended that meeting. So I thank her for that. Okay, so with that, the main issue that will be discussed tonight is university and colleges. And just to set it up a little bit, we've got, there's some specific examples, but we want to keep this broader. Any changes that happen in the future to the ordinance would not just apply to one specific street or one specific college, but we do say CCU a lot, because that has been the main consternation among some, and certainly has been the example that's been used. And it is the one that is before us, meaning that's what we talked about. We have CCU that's right here. Everybody up here, I can speak for all of council, is very appreciative that CCU is in Lakewood. They're a good partner to the city. But with that, as with any, when you have neighbors, sometimes there's a dispute, and there are residential, there's a residential neighborhood that is right next to the university. And the issue tonight is whether or not, and the issue going forward, is whether or not a university, whether it be CCU or anyone else, can own and control duplexes or houses in that residential neighborhood, definitions of student living, what can a city do as far as ordinances and zoning to regulate those uses, if any? And so that is what we will be discussing tonight. Did I sum that up, Mr. Mayor?
Very well. Thank you. Since we have no staff presentation, we'll go right to public input. I'll read the names from the public comment roster and ask that you, I'll read three names at a time, and if you'll be ready to follow each other to the podium, we would appreciate We have Robert Baker, the president of Mid-Lakewood Civic Association. Mr. Baker has three people who have ceded their time to him, so he will have 10 minutes. The three people, and please raise your hand. Michelle Barnett, ceded her time. M. Bennett, Brennan?
Hunter over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. John, well, yes, John Hunter, and looks like M.B.E.N.E.L.T. Benal.
I thought we had only two.
Oh, okay. Well, you may go ahead, sir. Let me figure out my timer here.
Mr. Abel.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Robert Baker. I'm the president of Mid-Lakewood Civic Association, and I'd like to start out by congratulating everybody who won their elections this year and recently. And we're happy to be here tonight to go over this issue. I just want to point out a couple of things before I start my presentation. You might notice a lot of red in the audience. That's a visual point of solidarity for you folks to see this evening, that we asked people to wear red. So I'm assuming most people wearing red are doing so for that purpose.
Do you mind just speaking into the mic a little bit closer?
Sure, sure.
And pull it towards you, too.
All right. So, and I also want to point out that I was one of the people instrumental, along with Jerry Coffey, back in 2002 and '03, when this issue first came up. So we've lived through the issue once before. But it is very frustrating, and respectfully, it's frustrating and downright wrong that we're here again tonight to defend an issue that we already resolved in 2002 and 2003. The facts are on our side, yet you are being told by staff and the city attorney to suspend basic logic and common understanding of the meaning of words to buy into specious and biased opinions put forth by CCU legal counsel that are designed to intimidate the city and fit the result they desire. In 2003, the council and planning commission determined that there is an important distinction between universities and K-12 schools that needed to be addressed through zoning. Universities have different aspects and impacts than K-12 schools, which are a use-by-right in low-density residential zones. Importantly, providing housing was recognized as a typical function of a university. Acknowledging the impact of institutionally-controlled housing on the lifestyle of a low-density residential neighborhood, the 2003 ordinance was passed. It was deemed defensible by then-city attorney Roger Noonan, and it was accepted by CCU without further legal action, despite significant financial and planning consequences. The new ordinance required divestment within two years of, I think it was, seven houses and a duplex in our neighborhood that CCU controlled and had begun using for student housing. All of the properties were indeed sold within the two-year period, and special use was granted for some of the buildings, I believe they're all music buildings, but I'm not sure, on Garrison, until such time in the future that the school stopped using them in continuous fashion. Said properties would then fall under the prohibition of university use in that residential zoning. So long, hard-fought debate resulted in protections for the neighborhoods from institutional uses expanding beyond the legal footprint of the CCU campus. Then around 2011, after a number of unsuccessful attempts to relocate the campus, CCU made the decision to stay in Lakewood and redevelop and rezone the current campus. The 2003 ordinance did not allow for aspects of their new plans, so CCU surreptitiously acquired all of the residential properties adjacent to their campus along Cedar and the west side of Cody Court. Only after they acquired the properties did they reach out to the neighborhood. They openly admitted to trying to buy more properties to the north and east and asked for our blessing as they went for rezoning to incorporate these duplexes into their campus footprint. We felt that, once again, CCU was acting outside of the code and then covering after the fact. We made it clear to the CCU administration that we expected this to be their last incursion, and we would not put up a major resistance to the rezone. This was still not good enough for CCU's self-interests and insincere proclamations about being a "good neighbor." We came to find out that they actually had acquired three more duplexes on the east side of Cody Court and had been renting them to the public, which was their right to do. Emboldened by the omission of some of the detailed definition of student living units in the 2012 restructuring of the code, CCU's intent to start using these off-campus residential properties for student housing came to light almost three years ago. Because of our knowledge of the clear prohibition of university uses in the use table 17.4.1 and the definition of university, which includes "student living units," our protests have brought us to this point. CCU has thus far refrained from carrying out their plan to start using these off-campus R2-zone properties for student housing. They have, however, recently started to use one of the duplexes that had remained vacant for most of this disputed time for another university use, that of faculty housing. This is not an issue of ownership or landlord-tenant norms, nor an issue of discrimination. I understand that I would not be able to successfully apply to rent one of CCU's dorm rooms, and CCU should understand they cannot turn residential properties into buildings with ever-changing transient groups of their students, creating the attendant negative impact on the neighborhood. Rather, this is a matter of use, which is the whole purpose of zoning. That's why it's called the use table in the code. Zoning dictates and restricts what owners can do with their properties all the time to create reasonable accommodation for results beneficial to the whole community. In this case, staff and biased attorneys, in this case, staff and biased attorneys are asking you to ignore the facts to produce an outcome in favor of the interests of the powerful institution. Staff would have you believe that the use of a duplex cannot change. If CCU were to purchase an elementary school building, they could continue to operate the school under the legal R zoning of a K-12 school. If, however, they decided to stop the K-12 operation and start holding university classes in that building, it would clearly be a change of the use of that building and a prohibited use in that zone. We ask the council to insist upon enforcement of university use prohibitions intended to preserve the character of our low-density residential neighborhoods. We ask the council to exercise their responsibility and act to make clear the intent of the 2003 ordinance and not be bullied by special interests. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up are Lenora Herskowitz, Jerry Coffey, and Rex Wood.
Lenora Herskowitz, 140, South Cody Court.
Can you bring that thing down toward your mouth?
I talk loud. After all the properties on the south side of Cedar and the west side of South Cody Court were quit, claimed to CCU in 2012, the university wanted to incorporate their purchases into part of their campus expansion. These duplexes were all zoned R2, which would prohibit university use. So before they started building a parking lot on Cedar or placing students in the acquired homes, they applied for a zoning change. On August 24, 2012, a city staff report stated and underlined, "The rezoning of property will not impact the changes to the zoning ordinances the residents initiated in 2003." But in spite of this, between 2012 and 2013, CCU bought two duplexes on the east side of South Cody Court and added a third in 2016. All of these were adjacent to each other, so the university now owns half of the east side of South Cody Court. In August of 2019, the university moved faculty into one of these duplexes. This particular property had remained empty for the greater part of two years. The university claims that this is not a university use, merely a duplex use, which is permitted in an R2 zone. But this raises an interesting question, because on the west side of the street, an administrative staff member lives in a duplex with her family, but it is considered a university use, while on my side of the street, it is not. You can't have it both ways. If the university wants to use these duplexes to house their students or their staff, they need to apply for a rezoning, and obviously, they are aware of this, because they've already followed this procedure in 2012. Now, I'd like to shift to another topic. Recently, I sent an email to the council and to staff expressing my concern about misinformation that was presented by the director of planning in his memo that is part of the packet submitted for this study session. Before I sent this communication, I contacted the director to give him a heads-up and provide an opportunity for him to remedy the problem. When we spoke, I went over the items that were inaccurate, his response that these weren't key issues in the CCU discussion. I explained that his statements are used as the basis for decision-making by several entities, including the city council and the planning commission.
I'm sorry, can you wrap it up, please?
I have a half a page. The public also has access to the staff's recommendations and reports. Information is presented as factual without source identification. If in one short memo, I could cite three misstatements, how can we trust that the positions presented by staff are accurate? There is rarely fact-checking, and all too often, a staff report is accepted as gospel. When you are making important decisions that have a lasting effect on the future of neighborhoods...
Can you wrap it up, please?
I'm on the last sentence.
Please.
You better be certain that the information you receive has transparency, where the source is clearly identified, and that the content is accurate and factual. Thank you.
Thank you. When the light, the light will go on when you have 30 seconds left. If the remaining speakers would try to start wrapping it up when you see the yellow light. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Coffey?
I'm Jerry Coffey. Our city attorney in his letter dated July 2 states that a duplex is a use permitted in the R2-zoned districts. The truth is, a duplex is a building, not a land use. Examples of land uses would be things like recreational, transportation, agricultural, residential, and commercial. Our city attorney says that this duplex use, as he calls it, which is permitted or legal, cannot be rendered illegal based solely on who owns the property. So let's look at three examples based on this attorney's statement. Example number one, a private university owns a duplex on Cody Court. Can the city put restrictions on this particular entity who owns the property? Example number two, an Airbnb... Example number two, an Airbnb entity owns a duplex on Cody Court. Can the city put restrictions on that particular entity who owns the property? Example number three, I am an individual who owns a duplex on Cody Court. My property also has an accessory dwelling unit. Can the city put restrictions on this particular entity who owns the property? The truth is that while property ownership comes with many rights, these rights are often superseded by local zoning ordinances. Zoning ensures land is used in a manner that protects the rights of all members of the community. The impact on a neighborhood must be considered and not ignored. What makes our neighborhood sustainable? Does the comprehensive plan support preserving the unique qualities of our neighborhoods? Historically, across the United States, some have felt that zoning ordinances were a violation of their right to do what they wanted with their own property. In 1926, the United States Supreme Court addressed the issue. In Euclid versus Ambler, in that decision, the court ruled that zoning regulations are a legitimate use of government authority. Thank you.
Rex Wood. And then Roberta Lundquist, John Lundquist, and Kyle, I'm sorry, Kyle, I can't get your last name, from West 5th Place. Go ahead, mister.
Good evening. My name is Rex Wood. I live at 160 South Yarrow Street, just across Alameda. I have three questions, really. First question is, how much property tax does CCU pay? And you already know the answer, yes? How much? Zero, right? Second question, when they bought up those properties, and if they buy up more, and they own those properties, how much property tax will they pay? How much have you already lost? I don't know, but it's a lot. So my question is, where do you want to go? What's the benefit? What's the benefit to the city? I really asked that question last time I was here with regard to CCU. The question was, could they actually build a dorm, a new dorm, rezone, and would it be okay? And everybody said, yeah, yeah. Well, I got up and I said, you know what? I spent many years in Fairfax County, Virginia. The largest university in the state of Virginia is George Mason University. It's in the middle of suburbia, Fairfax County. If any of you know anything about Fairfax County, it is a giant traffic jam. CCU, since 2009, has had an enrollment increase of 60% or more. It was 60% by 2018. I don't know what it is now. Another 5% maybe. Well, it's going to keep going up. And if I were them, you know what I'd do? I'd buy every property I could find and build up more dorms. If they build it, they will come. If you think you've got traffic problems now, brother, you have got to be kidding me. It's going to be horrible. Yarrow, and this is my last thing, Yarrow is a cut-through. Nobody likes to go up here but Wadsworth. They like to cut through Yarrow, and it's become, and it's dangerous. Now, I'm not here to talk to you about Yarrow. I'm just here to talk to you about what the traffic problem is likely to be, and you already know what it is. That's it.
Thank you. Roberta Lundquist. Kyle, it looks like 8105 West 8th Place. Did I get that?
No, I thought it was the sign that she, I'm a rookie, too.
Okay. Welcome to the club. Karen Nealan. Okay. Steve Nealan. Thank you, Steve. And then Shannon Dreyfus and Tom Raganetti.
Hi, Steve Nealan. I live at 42 Carr, and I want to talk about Yarrow Street. I'm here, I ride my bike every day that there isn't six inches of snow on the ground. I live on Carr. I ride south to Bayard, and I take a right and go down Bayard. It has turned into the most dangerous area in everywhere where I ride. I've crossed Alameda at Carr, I've crossed it at Garrison, I cross First Avenue a few times, but between Cody Court and Everett, I've almost been hit six, eight times. People park on the south side of Bayard, they turn it into a one-lane road, and Yarrow is a cut-through, and I just zigzag through the streets. It's about an eight-mile ride, and the closer you get to the school, the more dangerous it is. It can be, I've ridden during the grade school, when the kids are being dropped off and when the kids are being let out of school. First Avenue is like riding in a public park compared to Bayard any time of day because of the school. If they need parking at the college, they should build a parking garage. They need to do something, but it's just a dangerous place for me to ride. And that's, I just wanted to let you know, and hopefully you can come up with an idea to solve that. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Shannon Dreyfus, 8787 West Alameda. Good evening. I work with the university. Thank you for taking the time to hear from myself and my colleagues in the public. It's interesting that we want many of the same things. Many of the people in this room want many of the same things. CCU chose to stay in Lakewood, and we want to respect and enhance the character of Lakewood. We want to honor and protect property rights, both our neighbors and our own. We are a patient and generous property owner. Several residents who live in CCU-owned property for many years are actually here tonight. We have encouraged and acted in partnership with the city at many levels for many, many years now, including patiently working through this current issue that we're discussing. I want to be clear, CCU does not want dorms in the neighborhood. We don't want institutional housing or student apartments in a residential neighborhood. That's not a good idea for anybody. And there's no dispute that CCU is allowed to own property, just like any other entity or individual. In fact, there are several people in the room tonight that own rental property in Lakewood, and they rent to anybody they like. However, there's a concept being discussed that allows one person to live in a duplex owned by CCU, but prevents another person, in this case, a student, to live in a duplex owned by CCU. This seems wrong. If that were the case, CCU could not rent to a family whose child attended Lakewood High School, graduated, and chooses to attend CCU on a scholarship and still live at home. Either the family would have to move, the child would have to move out, or the child could not attend college. Alternatively, if one of our current tenants, who's an adult, were to enroll in, for instance, CCU's online college, they would be compelled to move or not be attending school. I can describe many other scenarios, and I have, that likewise highlight the shortcomings of the "old, previous zoning language." But clearly, something is wrong with the concept. The result is unfair and potentially harmful to students and the community. And I'd like to say, CCU undergraduate students are adults, they are citizens and residents of Lakewood. Regarding the current property zoning issue, we support the conclusion as determined by Travis Parker and Tim Cox in Lakewood Planning and Legal. We will continue to lead this process, partner and participate in solutions that improve the community and protect all property owners in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Raganetti, and I'm here as a lawyer to represent CCU. I have a law degree, obviously. I also have a degree in city planning, and among other things, I teach the Lakewood Citizens Planning Academy and have every year since it was founded. And I've practiced land use law 43 years. The memos that you got from Travis Parker and from Tim Cox are absolutely right. You cannot regulate land use based on ownership. If CCU or any other university owns duplexes and uses them as duplexes, they're entitled to do so like anyone else who owns a duplex. The previous ordinance, which Mr. Baker included in his most recent letter to you, was regulation based on use, not regulation, excuse me, regulation based on ownership, not regulation based on use. And that is a problem. You can't have a case where one owner is entitled to use something in the same way that another owner is not because of ownership alone. And I might point out as well that Tim Cox was also right at the very end of his memo when he pointed out that there is a law called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which prohibits disparate treatment based on being a religious organization as opposed to a secular one. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the advice that you've been given by your planning director and by your city attorney is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, my name is Marcus Pockner. I am a consultant, zoning and neighborhood outreach consultant to CCU. I do want to be clear, just tell a little bit about my company. We work on zoning challenges all across the front range. We are brought in to negotiate agreements on behalf of institutions, on behalf of neighborhoods, in very challenging situations similar to this. We've worked on Ninth and Colorado, Fitzsimmons, done all the redevelopment of Lowry, and a number of challenges similar to this situation. We are looking for solutions that wrap around the existing zoning code and add to the existing code. I do want to say, one of the things we're very proud, we created the CCU Forum, where we have an opportunity for neighbors and the university to be together regularly to have dialogue about these type of issues. We want to move that forward. We have suggested a good neighborhood agreement or mediation to move that forward. We understand, and as you heard from the neighborhood leaders, they didn't want to go that path because they wanted to kind of have a more absolute discussion within the zoning code. I do want to acknowledge this existing challenge and the disagreement on kind of the extremes of both sides, but there is broad agreement here and on a number of principles. You heard from Mr. Dreyfus and a number of the neighbors about not wanting dorms or student living units within the neighborhood. You also heard about protection of existing neighborhood character. There is no dispute that duplexes are an allowed use, and as long as used and consistent with your code, then perfectly acceptable within the neighborhood. Perhaps there's another alternative that exists. Again, looking for this. I shared with the clerk, if I may, a definition, perhaps maybe we could look at defining a new definition of student living units, which is a use by a university. Again, there is broad agreement that no dorms or student living housing should be allowed in this neighborhood. This sample definition, which I shared with the clerk, I'll be happy to read to you. We propose the following definition. Student living unit, a dwelling that houses five or more related or unrelated students characterized by dormitory-style rooms, collective suite-style semi-private areas, both the community bathroom facilities and no kitchen areas, or multi-unit apartment-style dwellings, each styled with shared, common interior and exterior areas. I am certain this definition is not perfect, but is indicative of a path forward that lives within your zoning code. It gives protection and clarity to both of the parties involved here. There would be no dorms or residential expansion from the university that would exist in the R1 or R2-zone district, but the existing character, duplexes included, are allowed as a use regardless of ownership. Again, this is just an idea, and we obviously want to work with all the stakeholders in this room to move something forward. One last note, City of Denver defines student housing in its code. Many cities define senior housing or residences for older adults, but they all differentiate from existing uses like single-family homes or duplexes. They always differentiate. This differentiation and an appropriate definition of student living is our collective challenge. We want to be part of that solution. We very much look forward to working with all of you on finding that solution moving forward.
Thank you. Dan Kors. Thank you. Tom Schelfield. Okay, thank you. Catherine Claypool.
My name is Catherine Claypool. I live at 8775 West Bayard, and for many of you who don't know, that is directly across from the big event center that's on Bayard. I can tell you from first, very firsthand experience, that the good neighbor policy that's been mentioned many times by CCU does not apply to me, and probably doesn't apply to anybody within earshot of that event center. I've complained for years, and years, and years, and years, and we could go on for all the many years I've complained. It's disturbing when you can't sit in your own living room and listen to a television program without the windows going like this, from the boom, boom, boom. Sometimes this starts at 8:00 in the morning. Sometimes it's a little later. We have chapel on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have rehearsal for chapel. We have events that are scheduled. The last note said there would be slightly more noise than usual. Well, I'm telling you, I left because I couldn't stand it. When I got home, when they were letting out about 10:00, the parking lot was abuzz with, you know, many, 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 many cars, and the smell of marijuana was overwhelming. Well, maybe it wasn't marijuana, maybe it was a skunk in the neighborhood, I don't know, but it was very strong and through the air. So I'm here to tell you that when CCU promises or says they're a good neighbor, or is going to be a good neighbor and going to use your neighborhood kindly, that's not what they're about. They're about themselves, they're about the money they can get, and don't kid yourself, there's a bunch of money in this school business. If I were you, I'd watch out for my city parks. They're already using your tennis courts, baseball fields. Better stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Sincere, then Janet Black and Stephanie Day.
I'm Kathy Sincere. I live at 125 South Zephyr Street. And first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking my wonderful Ward 1 reps, Raimi Johnson and Charlie Abel, who do a smashing job. Thank you. You know, I wasn't going to come up and say anything because a lot has been said already, but I wanted a little clarification. I'm reading this flyer that was sent out from the Mid-Lakewood Association, and it says... says, at the end, additionally, I haven't been to other meetings before on this, additionally, the city planning department removed critical language from the code unbeknownst to city council, undermining the 2003 ordinance. And to read that was very disturbing, disheartening and disgusting, quite frankly. And I was wondering, can anybody clarify that for me, what went on with the planning department? Okay.
We'll address that later.
Okay. But is that a fact, that that happened?
We'll address that after.
Okay, sorry. So, if it is a fact, and I ignored or violated a city code, I would be ticketed, fined, and possibly arrested. That's all I want to say. I've lived here for 40 years in this neighborhood, and I want to see it retain the character that it has. I've had, and I'd just like to say as a little side note, I've had a lot of dealings with the planning department in the last 10 years over the village at Belmar. I was on the Alameda Heights Lakewood Homeowners Association as a board rep, and so I was very much involved with that for eight years. And the planning department came to the first couple of meetings where they wanted to have us sign away our covenant rights, which we did, and I tried to tell people to think about it more. And after we did that, the planning department never showed up at one meeting after that, where we had concerns, complaints. I was told, oh, you'll have to work with the developer on that one. And they, they were of absolutely no help to us as a neighborhood committee. So that's all I want to say about the planning department, and I hope, I hope that they're more helpful on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Black.
My name is Janet Black, and I live at 5 South Flowers Street, about two blocks from CCU. And I just want to say thank you to all the council members here, again, for your work for our city and for listening to many people's ideas and complaints and I, and even good things. And I just want to represent my neighborhood. I do respect my neighbors who are, some of them are here, who have disagreements with CCU. Also, full disclosure, I also work for CCU. I'm a professor there and on the administration, but a neighbor nonetheless. And I just had some neighbors over for dinner the other night, and we were talking about CCU issues. And I wanted to say that they have great feelings about CCU. So they didn't show up here, perhaps, in red shirts, but they are really appreciative of everything that CCU does for the neighborhood. One of the first speakers talked about calling on logic, and I like to call on logic too, related to something that Shannon Dreyfus said, and that is, how can one particular business own a building that can't be used the same way another business owns a building? It just seems illogical there to me a little bit. The third speaker today pulled on examples, and the examples that we have of what happens if somebody's living in a CCU residence that's rented not for university purposes, and that is then, that person then becomes a CCU student? Does that person have to get evicted? I think there are a lot of unintended consequences if we define university use so narrowly to have, have it put that way. So, thank you for your time.
Stephanie Day. And then Christopher Gibbons, Valerie Stone, and Jeff Jaeger.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm Stephanie Day. I'm the student body president over at CCU, and our Senate, some of our senators are here with us. And I just kind of wanted to address some of the topics that were touched on tonight already. Just to clear up, I believe communication is key, and knowledge is power. And so, if they're just provided with more knowledge, it could alleviate some of their anger and issues. There's been some anger and issues regarding the increase of our university, but I would like to say that we are capped out, and we have no intention on increasing our student attendance at CCU. And I've talked with the administration and board of trustees on that aspect. In addition to that, we just built our last residence hall, and will be now moving towards building up, not out, but up on academic, on the academic buildings. So there will be no further plans to build residence halls, so therefore not an increase in population, therefore not an increase in the growth into the neighborhood. In addition, it was, we've, as a student senate, we've also gotten students' input about doing a parking garage, although it is $50,000 per spot to build a parking garage. In general, just per spot is $10,000, but to do a parking garage, it's $50,000. And with, regarding the noise on CCU, our quiet hours is to 10:00 p.m. We have about one concert a semester, and we give our neighbors notice at their houses that we will be having a concert, and it's 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at night. In addition, I am on the CCU softball team, a two-time All-American, and I would like to say that we no longer have a tennis team on CCU's, or in CCU's athletic department. So we do not use the tennis courts. In addition, with the softball and baseball fields, we rent that out and have to go through the city as well. As if it snows, we aren't allowed to play or practice on the field if the city says we cannot. And then, lastly, just in addition, I think we just kind of need to take a step back and realize what CCU is all about, and that is about growing students' education. I come from a family of two educators in the third biggest school district, Clark County School District in Las Vegas, Nevada, and education is important, and I think we need to come to the realization that education is important and that will ultimately benefit our community in further years as we have students that are already working in Washington, DC, besides Trump and additional senate. But I believe there's informal power and formal power, and if there's anything that needs to be addressed by neighbors or council, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to help you and provide information. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Gibbons. Then Billene Stone and Jeff Jaeger.
Thank you, council. Good evening to you. I am Christopher Gibbons. I live at 9005 West Second Avenue, and I'm on the board of Mid-Lakewood Civic Association. I think we have a use issue for the zoning before us, not ownership. I think operating a property as a mini dormitory is a different use. Operating as faculty housing is a different use. And we need your help with clarifying this. And I'm going to say this, it sounds a little snarky, and I don't mean it to sound that way, but I think we have to try to think clearly about this. If a student is living in a unit, it sounds to me like that's the student living unit use. That's what's happening. And so the way the code is written right now, that use is prohibited in R2. And that's what we keep coming back to the neighborhood, pointing out. And so we're at an impasse. It's kind of, we're hurling the same arguments back and forth at each other. It feels like it's been happening for a couple of years now, and we need your help with clarifying this. Thank you.
Thank you. Billene Stone.
You look like Jeff Jaeger to me.
Jeff's okay.
Okay. That was everyone. Congrats. Hey, that was a heck of a win, okay? Um, okay. Barely, barely made it through. All right, so I agree with Chris. We just need help clarifying, right? Travis and Tim have their perspective, and I've shared with this council prior to Anita that they had their perspective on 2090. This is where we got a little bit off last time on, when I spoke, and, you know, everybody has their perspective, and really, it's, it's up to you on, when you talk about character of neighborhood and items like that, and, you know, I completely agree. CCU's the only housing university, but if I went to Ward 4, and Red Rocks was going to start housing, and they were going to buy single-family homes, and I knocked on those doors, and I said, listen, how do you feel? Should I, like, this is 200, like, all, you know, all over again. We need your help clarifying. The status quo does not work. Now, yeah, we have our perspective, and I've told Adam and a variety of you that, hey, this is a way, would love to see it work out, but bottom line is, we definitely need some help, because the forum, while I appreciate Shannon then to meet with us, and we've had some great dialogues, we are at an impasse. I mean, there's no doubt. And I love that five-story building. Now, I'm sure some of my neighbors don't, sure some think it's too big, but obviously, I would love to see underground parking included in it. I know $50,000 a pop, that's, uh, it's quite the price tag, but, you know, so there's, there's items there that we need your help with, and that's, that's why we're here today. So we appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to all of us and have some thoughts and opinion of your own. I imagine you'll uncover 2012 and how that process worked and everything of that nature. But, yeah, we're happy to just appreciate your time and thank you for listening twice, really, for the four of you that were there for the study session. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Charlie Olson.
Sorry, my sign out was a little weak, but the pen ran out of ink. I'm glad you could read it. Okay, my issue is parking. R1 and R2 ought to, you ought to be able to come home and park in front of your house or at least a block away. Parking's not free, except on city streets. The city has to pave it, they have to park it, or, excuse me, they have to sweep it. I lived in an area where hadn't been swept in 12 years because parking was there, so there was dirt all over and leaves and, and that sort of thing. And there, when you have R1 and R2 with all these people living there, there's, parking is a problem. Drive down the street over there, and you can hardly get down there. The other, the other thing, I've been a donor to CC, to the University of, and now when I get solicitations, I say, I'll give you money if you build a parking unit, even though it's $50,000. I encourage you to donate no money until they solve the neighborhood problems. Who would want to live there? Not me.
Thank you. That exhausts the public comment roster. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mike Muller, would you please check in with the clerk? Mr. Muller.
You know, I find this extremely humorous, that we went through this before.
Did you start the timer, Ms.?
We went through this with CCU and the old, the old commissioners, and we went through all that, and the city decided to change the rules without the council even knowing it. That the people, that the people actually think that this meeting will change anything. There's only one solution. Fix the real problem. The city attorney and Travis, they're the ones that think they can change all the rules. They think they don't have to put up with the ordinances that you fine people create. They're above the law. Sovereign citizens, you might say. And it's your fault, because you could have got rid of both of those turkeys. Why haven't you done it yet? If you would have gotten rid of both of them, we wouldn't have this problem. Nothing will change. In another five years, we'll be going through the same thing if these people are still here, or people like them, or counselors that can't take the reins. Once again, the inmates are running the asylum. These people run the city. I thought we voted you guys in, huh, Mr. Skilling? What the hell is wrong with you people? Take control of this city. Don't even say it. First Amendment, don't even say it. I think this is very humorous. The only saving grace in this, if we listen to Ocasio-Cortez, the whole thing is going to be underwater anyway. We're all going to be dead anyhow, so it doesn't matter in 10 years. But, for the time being, take control of the city. Get rid of him, get rid of these two turkeys. Life will be so much better. And everybody that voted for Adam Paul, that are in this room, I can say one thing, you got what you voted for. I've got another minute.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address their public, their First Amendment rights? Please, no applause. Yes, ma'am. Please, both of you. You're next. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Abel, for having us this evening, and thank you, council members, for all being here and listening to our concerns. My name is Kalen McDaniel, and I am a student at Colorado Christian University. I'm a senior, and I am the representative on Senate for the Student Standard and Accountability Board. I want to talk about one of the reasons why I chose to go to CCU and what my experience was in my very first week there. One of the standout moments of my time was the fact that in our first week at CCU, we, the entire campus had a service day. I remember when I was a freshman and I went on my very first service day, we went to a local church, and we were able to help the school out there. We painted rooms, we helped with the landscaping, and I've had numerous opportunities to participate in the same kind of service opportunities. In fact, as senate, we have an entire month devoted specifically to Lakewood-oriented service projects. In fact, at our senate meeting that happened right before this, we put together different homeless care packages that are intended to be given out in the Lakewood community with access to different resources that they can take advantage of and hopefully have long-term help. More than just paying service to the community, which every CCU student is required to do by the university, 180 hours of community service in their time, to be exact, I've gotten to feel like a member of the Lakewood community in my four years here. I run around these neighborhoods often, I'm a big jogger, and actually, it's funny to see your names because I've seen them in yard signs all over the neighborhood. And so it's just really a little bit surreal to kind of see it all take place, and it's just an amazing civic opportunity that I've even had to take part in this, and I'm really incredibly grateful for the opportunity. So I wanted to say thank you for being Lakewood, thank you for giving us the opportunity to engage in civic activity. Additionally, I'm an economics major, so that has provided me lots of opportunities to look at the nuances of the tax system and the way that we are supporting our government, our entities, our services. And while many of the things that we've stated are true, specifically about property taxes and the way that a nonprofit, or that our university would not be paying them, I would like to make it clear that the economic contribution that students pay into the city of Lakewood is large, just in sale taxes alone, Colorado-based tax, as well as the local sales taxes that we pay on any kind of consumer goods that are bought locally. Additionally, considering the fact that many CCU students walk or don't go very far, I just would like to point out that those are very large direct contributions. I personally lived on South Cody Street last year, and I considered it a great opportunity to be neighbors with all of you, and quite frankly, I wish that we could have had a little bit... little bit more engagement. Now, I live with my husband on South Teller Street, and we still consider ourselves very fortunate to live in Lakewood, and we vote every year and are excited to keep doing the same. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Carrie Farley, and like Kalen, I'm a student at CCU. I'm also here to tell you a little bit about my CCU experience. So, as Kalen stated, we all go and do a service day our first day at CCU. CCU is very committed to being a member of the community and to helping the community. Because again, as Kalen stated, our service doesn't stop there. We're encouraged to go out both before and after we've completed our required 180 hours of service, to go out and serve Lakewood's community. And the only way that we can keep doing that is if we're enabled to do that, if the city of Lakewood supports CCU. Now, I agree, parking's an issue. I can't tell you as a senator how many emails I get from my constituents who are upset about parking. It's probably more than y'all do, maybe not, but people are incredibly upset about parking. And when we're talking specifically about a parking garage, for the nine of us who are here tonight to have parking spots, it would cost a whopping $450,000. And that's just for nine parking spots in a parking garage. I would like to point out that, for the most part, what CCU students are doing is completely legal. Basically, what happens is if we do something that's illegal, we are absolutely ticketed and towed, and several students have complained to me about that before. And the response that I give them, which is probably the same response that y'all give people, is if you're breaking the law, you're going to get ticketed, you're going to get fined, your car's going to get towed. Essentially, when we're talking about CCU students parking, this isn't just a problem with the neighbors, CCU students acknowledge it as well. And CCU Senate is working with CCU facilities to do everything that we can to alleviate this parking burden, to alleviate the stress that it puts on both the neighborhood and CCU students. And if we could just snap our fingers and create more parking spots, we absolutely would do that. However, basically, what we're doing right now is trying to create parking where we can create parking. Additionally, when we're talking again about CCU being a good neighbor, somebody brought up marijuana before. I'd like to point out that we, as CCU students, sign a lifestyle covenant, which I'm not sure how many of y'all were aware of that. But our lifestyle covenant would be, according to some, incredibly strict. For example, we're not allowed to drink, obviously, we're not allowed to smoke, we're not allowed to gamble, and this applies to us everywhere. So, for example, I'm from Las Vegas. When I go home for Thanksgiving, I'm also not allowed to participate in these activities as per the contract that I sign with CCU. And when we're talking about CCU renting out to the people in these duplexes, especially if it is included with students, these students still have to abide by these policies. It doesn't change if they're technically not on CCU's campus anymore. It is for all these reasons and so many more that I strongly urge you to consider the needs of CCU when we're discussing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, please.
Good evening, I'm Laura McGee. I came to listen, I didn't intend on speaking, but I guess a couple of things are really bothering me. One, I haven't heard any comments directed to the religion of CCU. I have heard a lot of comments from neighbors objecting to use. If you run a business and you want to know how well you're treating your customers, and you want to know, "Do they think you're doing a good job? Are you servicing them correctly?", you ask them. So, if CCU really believes they're a good neighbor, and they're getting all this feedback that says they're not a good neighbor, if I'm running a business, that tells me I have a problem, and I need to try to address it. But it sounds to me like what CCU is doing is fishing for loopholes in the zoning. So, I don't see that this is the way that Mr. Cox does describe this. I didn't see any background in the packet information that bothered me, other than Travis's memo and Mr. Cox's memo. So, we heard there were agreements after 2003, and CCU divested themselves of properties. I guess the big question is, why are they buying up these residential homes, duplexes and homes, in a residential R2 zoning? They run an academic institution, it's clear that they want to use it for student housing. And whether you are able to say, "We can limit the number of students in there" or not, when they went through their official development plan, their new development plan in 2012, seems pretty clear, they set a property area that was to be a buffer between the residential areas, when you look at that official development plan. And also, this took a few months or longer, but it went parallel to the adoption of the 2012 zoning rewrite. So, I think their ODP was adopted December of 2012, and it included a buffer zone. So, they realized when they created this, they needed to be a good neighbor, and they have buffer areas. But now, they're buying up property again, and they're still wanting to use it as student housing. So, does this council not foresee that they're going to attempt to buy up a lot of properties because their mission statement still is to keep increasing their student enrollment? And do you really want to see an entire neighborhood converted the way that we're seeing other residential areas go now, where a developer comes in and buys two or three adjacent lots, they get a rezoning, and we have slot homes, or we have 12-unit apartment buildings, and so on and so forth? Is that the direction that this neighborhood is facing? Because I kind of see the handwriting on the wall. And it's not unrealistic for an academic institution to be held to zoning that they agreed to. I hear a lot of lip service with every zoning case that goes to the planning commission and y'all about the comprehensive plan and compatibility and integrity of neighborhoods, but it is never implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, if you would be ready, Ms. Doolin.
Hi, my name is Jamie Venecco, and I live on South Field. My husband and our eight-year-old are back there, and actually, some of our neighbors, because they're neighbors that we know for the last six years. We picked this neighborhood because it was a family neighborhood. Our kid gets to walk five blocks and go to the school. I teach at Creek, and yet I chose to keep our son in our neighborhood because we believe in it. And while I appreciate that you say you're good neighbors and you're doing all these great things, right now, we have a house that went for sale, some good neighbors moved, and they sold it to a couple that's posing as a family buying it for their son who goes to CCU. We've never seen their son there. They changed the basement, added four egress windows, they now rent it to like six people we don't even know. I mean, it's just cars all the time, different ones. And our son was so sad because all he kept thinking was, "I'm going to get a new neighbor, maybe a new family." And instead, we have people who aren't a part of our neighborhood living there. I think one time, one person waved to me once. And I just, I want you guys to understand, like, we picked this neighborhood because of the fact that on Halloween, people are out, and we have this awesome spirit in our neighborhood, that our neighbors that are actually behind us over there, we do dinners together during the year, and we get everybody on the street that we can to come. Flower does a block party every year. That's not CCU students who are changing every year. I don't want that anymore. It's really sad to see that house across the street from us being wasted, from having a family there that could be part of our neighborhood, to an ever-changing group of kids and students who we don't even know. So, I just really, and the other piece is that bayou thing with the parking, I will agree. Six years ago, when we moved there, we could walk down that bayou, and it was wide open, there was no issues, safe, dog, kid, everything. Now, I'm scared. I'm scared to send my son on his bike down that street because it's so busy, and there's so many cars parked along there that are not for the neighborhood, it's for the school. So, please, as a young member of, like, I've only been here six years in this neighborhood, but we don't plan on leaving because we believe in it. And I appreciate the time to speak and let you hear from somebody maybe who hasn't lived here for 40 years, 30 years, but a newer family that wants to preserve that. Thank you.
Jerry Doolin. Good evening.
My name is Jerry Doolin, I live at 130 South Cody Court. I'm in one of the duplexes I rent from CCU. And for the last several years, I've been assuming that I'm going to have to move. I think I wanted to talk to you about the writing on the wall. In 2012, the university bought up all the duplexes on the other side of the street and on Cedar, and they did it all under the radar. They bought it through friends of the university, LLCs. A lot of these properties were then quit-claimed to the university. And when it was all said and done, and they owned them all, they came to you and asked for a zoning change, which they got. And then, they tore down five beautiful duplexes to make a parking lot. And there's still four, five left? Four? They bought my property in, I think, 2019, or where are we? 2016. And the very first thing I heard was, "You can send your rent to us now instead of the old landlords, we own the property." And I said to them, "How long will I be able to stay? If you've ever been a renter and somebody buys the property you live in, you know that that's a possibility, you're going to have to move." And I was told, "It'll be, you can stay there years because it'll take a while before we own all the property on that side of the block, and then we can do something with it." Well, the writing's been on the wall, right? They're going to work at owning all the property on my side of the block, and then they're going to incorporate that into their campus footprint, and part of them will be torn down and new things built. And there'll be students where I live now, I've lived there 10 years. Recently, one of the people, there's four of us living in the two duplexes that, we all know each other, recently, one of them was offered a six-month lease, which makes all four of our leases ending this March, March and April, which is the time of the year once before they told us we all had to leave because that gave them the summer to get ready to put students in. And I have a sneaky suspicion that we're all going to be asked to leave at the end of March. And I think that they will be putting students in there. And so, I'd like to see the zoning regulations that were in the wording put back in so that won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Kentner.
Thank you, I'm Kathy Kentner, and I live at 9475 West Cedar Avenue, which is adjacent to CCU property on the west side of Garrison Avenue in the Bondview neighborhood. I also did not intend to speak this evening, but I felt it necessary, first of all, to assure the students that this is not about the students themselves, and I'm glad that you've had a great experience, and I see you jogging by my home often. And we love, on our side of the street, how we have a great frisbee golf course now. And CCU also has wonderful property adjacent on my side of the street, where they can build plenty of student housing if they find need for more student housing. Tonight, it's all about zoning and what defines a university use. So, there is a neighborhood in the future for your service days to go to. And I have some concerns over the one proposal that I did here for a definition. I'd like to propose a separate one based on the Denver ordinance and really suggest that you look at what a lot of cities do, because it is very common to define university use, and that student housing is definitely a university use and not generally allowed in our residential zone districts. A definition that could be considered, which is very much how Denver uses it, is, "A structure used for residential accommodations for students of a college, university, or seminary, and where such structure is related to the college, university, or seminary." No ownership, if that's what we are uncomfortable with. And last, I would like to beg you to please be our representatives for the neighborhood. We cannot afford all of the legal and other paid representatives that you've heard from CCU tonight. And we have our zoning ordinance, and we have our elected representatives, so please uphold our zoning ordinance and define student and faculty living as a university use. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and open council law comments. Mr. Bieda.
I have a question. Thank you. I have a question, and I'm probably going to have several more, but I want to just start with this.
Need to turn on your ...
Try it again. All right, so I've got several questions, but I'm not going to do them all at once. I'm going to start with just one because I find it very troubling. And I'm going to direct my question to our counsel, Mr. Cox. And I'm wondering why it is that you provided a legal memo to our planning director back on July 2nd, talking about the enforceability of zoning regulations restricting ownership, which discusses some very important legal issues, and why that is not privileged communication between our attorney and our employees, and instead, has been turned out to the public? I thought we were entitled to privileged communications with our lawyer. Can you enlighten me?
You are correct about that, counselor. You are entitled to privilege, and almost everything we communicate with you is protected by that privilege. That memo in that instance was provided at the request of the planning director. I didn't know at the time that it was going to be disclosed, and there was a miscommunication as to whether it could be. I only found out after the fact that it had been shared beyond the planning department. And so, it's been available to the public since that time.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, let me do a follow-up then with you, Mr. Parker. Do you not understand the concept of privileged communication with your lawyer? Are you the one that disclosed this? And if you did, did you have permission to do that from anybody, like our counsel? I'm just perplexed here, and I'm very concerned.
Absolutely, I understand your concern. My understanding is that this memo was printed by staff and distributed at the ad hoc committee meeting, and by doing so, we effectively waived privilege, and that was our mistake, and I take full responsibility.
All right, that answers my question. I'll have some more follow-up later. Thanks.
Ms. Springsteen.
Well, I guess I'll just get my feet wet here. My first planning session. I have some questions and things that are troubling me here. Zoning protections shouldn't be moving targets all the time. It seems that oftentimes, as in 2003 here, protections were put in place, and it was a lot of wasted time and effort. And so, one of the things I'm wondering is what changed from 2003 to now? You have an issue here of property owners' rights, which is one of the arguments CCU is putting forth. But what about some of the restrictions that we put in place with regard to, for instance, you can't have more than five unrelated people living in a home under Lakewood City ordinance? We're going to have an issue to deal with, with Airbnb coming up in the future. So, if we say we can't put regulations and restrictions in place, doesn't that back us into a corner with regard to regulating things like that? We had a change, a massive change in the zoning code in 2012, and a lot of people are concerned about the fact that 320 pages were just removed from the 400-page code. And so, one of the things I've heard from neighbors around CCU is the definition of student living unit, which was put in place in 2003 under the ordinance, was just removed. And so, now, we're getting this new suggested definition, which actually would treat the university better than all the neighbors around because it suggests ... university better than all the neighbors around because it suggests five or more unrelated people can live in a home. Why should the university be treated better than any other homeowner who can't have more than five? So that's a question I have. And then finally, I want to address the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act that has been set forth here. That was passed in 2000. So that was three years before the 2003 ordinance went into place. That was not a consideration at that time. Why is it a consideration now? And beyond that, if you look at the intent of that act, it was to protect the ability of religious congregations to exercise their faith. So, in other words, freedom of assembly. And so I'd like to know how and in what way defining student living unit would be some kind of imposition on religious expression. That act also says that unless, so government cannot put a substantial burden on religious exercise by a person or institution unless government has a compelling interest. So wouldn't protecting neighboring landowners' property rights be a compelling interest as well? Would be my question. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
I'll start with the last one regarding that act. It's simply the fact that that law exists. Yes, it existed before the last go-around in 2003. But what's significant, I think, about the act in general terms is not so much the intent or the language of it, but the interpretation of it by courts across the nation. I'm not in a position to expound on exactly how the law has changed, but the trend in the law has been to provide additional protection to religious organizations when it comes to land use regulation. And so there's concern, anytime you have a situation where a religious organization is limited or subjected to regulation in any way, you always have to think about, what is the Ralupa factor here? What is the Religious Land Use Act factor here? Is there a possibility that this attempt to regulate or limit or control something being done by an organization, does it have anything to do with the religious nature of that organization? Is this an activity that furthers the mission of that organization? These are questions you simply have to ask, and the point of raising it was to say, this is out there. CCU knows it's out there. We're not telling them anything they don't know. And it's just a reality that our function is to advise the city council on what we believe the law says and what position the council, we think the council should take to avoid liability, to avoid risk, to avoid problems like this one. This is another factor to consider in that equation. If there's going to be some attempt to regulate, we have to think about whether that federal act comes into play. And in 2003, there wasn't a whole lot of case law out there yet, and so I'm not sure anybody was spending much time thinking about that when this discussion was going on. I wasn't part of that, so I don't know. But I just assume that there was not enough case law after three years to really help people understand how the law was being used. Regarding the comment that something must have changed or what did change since 2003, again, that's before my time here. I've looked through a lot of the historic documents from that era, and I have an idea of some of the things that were going on then. It looks an awful lot like what's going on now. I'm not aware of any substantive change in the law or any significant change in the factual circumstances in the area. I think the way it's been described by various speakers tonight is how I understood that it happened. The discussion was taking place in 2003 because the school was acquiring some of those properties. And then that began happening again a couple of years ago, and that's when we got involved with the situation. So I don't know if there's anybody who can speak to any substantive change in the circumstances since that time to now. Again, our role is to look at the law now, advise you on the state of the law now, and provide advice and opinion on that landscape. The historic perspective is helpful, but not definitive in terms of what we ultimately advise the council to do.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Frankenstein?
Well, I guess if we're talking about advising the council on possible risks, how come that memo didn't include risks involving the neighbors suing the city or other risks of that nature? They only involved, the memo to me only involved risks of what CCU could do.
The intent of the memo is to give you an idea of where we think the law stands and what the most significant risks are. Are there risks in other directions? Of course there are. Is there a possibility of litigation or a challenge of some sort beyond tonight? Of course there is. And we're well aware that there are people you've heard from tonight, many others, who are not happy with the status quo and would like to see it fixed somehow, and they'll probably be willing to take major steps to pursue that. And we understand that. That is a risk. In the interest of economy and simplicity, we advise you on where we think the greatest risk is. And since the advice is that ownership is not a legitimate basis for regulating zoning, that is the greater risk that we've perceived.
So you think the risk of being sued over the RLUIPA is a greater risk than dozens of neighbors suing?
No, Counselor. That's one of the factors, as I said a little while ago, one factor that should be considered when evaluating what risks are out there. I'm not suggesting that that's a major part of the analysis.
Okay. What about my question about the over-five unrelated people in a house that's currently in our ordinance?
I heard that as well in the definition that was read by Mr. Prochnor. That would be a change in the law, and it's not consistent with what we currently have on the books. And I'm assuming that that was one of the things that he, and he's nodding now, I'm assuming that is one of the things that he would recognize is not consistent with the law on what constitutes a household in Lakewood today.
And then just addressing my question about taking out the definition of student living unit in 2012?
Mr. Parker?
So in 2012, the council didn't just edit the existing code. They wrote a new code. So they took one book and discarded it or set it aside and adopted an entirely new book with new chapters, new concepts, new organization of data, new zones. And they wrote definitions based on the terms in that new code. And the term student living unit didn't appear in the body of that new document.
And who made that decision?
I don't know that there was a decision. There was a new code written, and those words weren't used.
And there was no redlining of that for the council to indicate that would be taken out?
Again, there was an old book and a new book. So prior to 2012, we had Catcher in the Rye, and then we adopted To Kill a Mockingbird. We couldn't redline two separate books with two different complete concepts and organizations and words. There was no ability to redline one book to the other. We didn't start from one. We just wanted to start the organization of the second.
So we scrapped all the language from the previous code, is what you're saying?
The council replaced one in its entirety with a completely different book.
I guess my question with the redlining, though, is, was council adequately informed of removing things like the definition of student living unit when they voted on that new code?
The council was involved in the entire process from day one. They participated in task force meetings and...
But if you can't tell me who took out that definition, how was council informed?
Everything was taken out. The entire document was set aside, and a new one was adopted. So everything was taken out.
Mr. Parker, I'd like to ask you a question. You said council wrote that document?
Council was involved with the...
Council approved that document. They didn't write it. And they had no... In order to compare the two documents, you would have had to have one on one side, one on the other, and go through 390 pages of this one to see if anything was left out in the 80 pages of the other. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Kind of piggybacking on going back in time to the 2003, are we aware that at that time, Mr. Cox, I know this was, the old ordinance was signed by Mr. Noonan, Mayor Burkholder, so this is over 15 years ago, and none of us were here for that. Do we know if CCU objected at all to, was there any, certainly wasn't a lawsuit filed that I'm aware of. Did they, from what I understand, at least anecdotally, they did divest of certain properties as a result of this, which to me would imply that they were at least somewhat in agreement that this was a legally enforceable ordinance at the time. Do you have any additional information on that?
Not really. A lot of the documents we've looked at, there's correspondence back and forth between various groups, including the university, including neighbors, staff. There was certainly ongoing discussion. There were times of disagreement, and ultimately, that ordinance was adopted. But it's really hard to tell just from that collection of files what level of disagreement there might have been. And I'm not aware of any litigation arising out of that either.
I think it might be helpful for the future if this comes back as an ordinance, that was interesting hearing from one of the students talking about the contract that they signed with the university. I think one of the distinctions that I've heard, certainly in our ad hoc meeting and from other sources, the university control aspect is what makes this a bit different. This isn't a traditional landlord-tenant relationship. I sign a lease, and that landlord not only doesn't have possession, but certainly can't tell me that I can't drink in my house or gamble or any of those things. And I think that's where maybe a distinction is made if we're talking about use. It really doesn't have anything to do with the ownership. It has to do with the owner is exerting a different level of control. I think Ms. Kentner mentioned the Denver ordinance saying it was related, and I don't have that ordinance in front of me, that it's a related university use. And you could see, I think that's an argument that's worth exploring, is you could see that it's almost an extension of the university in order to impose its rules, which you don't have in a typical landlord-letsee relationship. And I think we've got, in the old ordinance, it does mention it is owned and controlled. I mean, the word "control" is actually in there. They're not saying just owned. And in this sense, you could take out the word "ownership" altogether and really get to the heart of the matter. The university is arguably, and these are just arguments, we're just trying to flush out some of these issues. I'm not making a value judgment one way or another, but you do have a university that is controlling. They could ostensibly switch out the students on a more regular basis. They could change them more regularly than, say, a six-month lease or a year lease. If there's a violation of school rules, I presume that the university can act and would not just allow them to keep living there. And I think it's that exertion of control that adds a different use argument that is separate from ownership. So I think you could put aside the ownership argument and focus strictly on the control language that was in the original ordinance. And I just would throw that up for discussion, that this is a bit different, and it certainly feels different than a normal landlord-tenant. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
A couple of questions that really bothers me about this situation. If I bought a house next door to CCU and decided that in addition to me living there, that I wanted to rent it, rent a couple of bedrooms to CCU students, would that be, would now I be under this control? Because I'm a private citizen, and I choose to buy a house in that neighborhood, would now I not be able to rent to a CCU student? I think what we're doing, if we would even consider doing this, is expand and actually taking a real look at property rights. That's where I see this, is this is a property rights issue. It's not, it's who, if I own a house there and I am told that, or someone comes to give me an offer, and it's a generous offer, if I find out that that owner, that the people that are getting ready to buy it have anything to do with CCU, should I say no to that offer? There's a lot of ownership property rights with this question that really bothers me that we're even thinking of going down this road. I don't think that we can do this. I don't think it's legally enforceable. I don't think that we can turn around and say, you can't rent. I mean, practically every town in Colorado that has a college in and around it has homes that they rent to college students. What would be the difference in that situation from what's going on here? I don't see the issues at all. I feel like it's property rights, and I feel like that's where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions and some comments as well. First, I want to say this is awkward, Shannon, because I absolutely believe that CCU is an asset to Lakewood, and I'm proud that it is in Ward 1. I'm grateful for the education that you provide, and I absolutely endorse and support the value systems that you have in place, that you instill in your students. I feel very strongly about that. Unfortunately, clearly, there is a disconnect with the university and the neighborhood. I tried to reach out to a counselor in Littleton today. They have Arapahoe Community College that is also in a residential neighborhood to see if they have similar issues, and I wasn't able to touch base with anyone. A little bit of the history that I have on this is that it is my understanding, in 2003, 2002, the neighborhood, CCU, and the city, there was legal advice for all three entities. And everybody signed off on additions to the zoning ordinance. Number one, that only five non-related people would be in any one home. Number two, there was a student living, student living unit definition that was added. And as far as I know, from 2003 until 2012, everything was smooth. I was on council in 2012 when the zoning ordinance was, as you say, Travis, a new book was written. And when you say council passed it, it passed on an eight-three vote. So it really was not a total endorsement. I was a no vote. There were many issues with it, and we are living with them now. And the task force that worked on that was handpicked, I know that for a fact, by the former mayor. And you can do with that as you want. So then we fast forward to 2000... So then, we fast forward to 2012, when the definition is taken out. There was not really a red line of anything. It was just totally new. And because of the work that this community adjacent to CCU had put into including that definition, it would have seemed really appropriate and just as a courtesy that city council would have been at least notified and that there would have been disclosure. I did not know anything about this, that the definition was deleted, until the neighborhood brought it to my attention. And when I asked you about it, you did say it was no longer needed. I'm still not comfortable with the fact of why it was taken out and who decided to take it out. I believe that there's probably more going on than what we know about, and we may never know the truth, frankly. It makes me wonder, frankly, what else was deleted, and nobody's actually brought to When I was looking at some of the preparation for tonight, on the third paragraph, quote, "Nor is there any dispute that the owners of the duplex properties can lease them to anyone, including CCU students." There's a lot of ambiguity in what we received tonight. It's my understanding as well that when many of the duplexes were sold, I believe they were approached by CCU. And Shannon, you'd be the only one that could answer that. So, basically, ownership-- and increasing ownership on that block was driven by CCU, to the best of my knowledge. That is testimony that we have received from some of the owners on that block. I appreciate, Stephanie, the testimony you gave, and it is awesome. And I am so proud of CCU and the students, that you have community outreach. I really applaud that. Thank you. I met you at the last forum. The gatherings that the neighborhood and CCU have are not task forces, they are forums. And I was very impressed with you at that time. You told me about your community outreach. Thank you. I think you make a difference in our community. You also stated that the population is now capped out. That's the first time I had heard that. That question had been asked at the forums, and I'm not sure that there was actually a definitive answer. Perhaps you can clarify that. Maybe I misunderstood or did not hear it. Keeland, I appreciated your testimony as well. It's very apparent to me, when you meet the students and hear them, you are very polished. You're getting a great education, and you're going to be leaders in the community. This is an odd question. You stated that you and your husband now live on Teller, and you vote. I'd like to know if there was an organized effort at CCU to register students. That's something that only some of you can-- you're shaking your head, yes?
I did register a vote because of mine. I'm not sure if it was--
Okay. Well, it's a question that at some point, I think, would be helpful to know. In closing, a while ago, I had a request for council action, that we re-insert the definition of a student living unit in the ordinance. I would like to see that happen. I would like to see it go to a first reading ordinance as soon as possible. I believe personally that this is likely going to end up in court, Mr. Raganetti. And Kathy, I think we all understand that there is a risk with this. But it needs to be resolved in a court, and it needs to be resolved by a judge. All of us up here have been put in a very extremely difficult position. And so, I would like to have an up or down vote on this, council, to re-insert the definition of student living unit back into the ordinance and to have a first reading on it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franks.
Thanks. Well, I wanted to first just speak to-- it's really important that we're really careful when we talk about property rights, because we are-- as a city, we have to impose rules all the time for the greater good. And so, we mentioned earlier, like, the short-term rentals. That's going to be one that, you know, we have to look at very holistically. So-- and as a city, we have all kinds of rules in place. For example, and those of you who know me know, I'm a beekeeper. City only allows me to have one hive. I'd love to have more, so if at some point, folks want to consider expanding that, we limit the number of cars that people can have. So, I want people to have a flavor for that, you know? When we just toss out property rights, there's limits to everything. And so, we certainly have to look at them through those lenses. I really want to talk a little bit about the document we received on the rezoning case back from 2012. And on page nine of that, some language really pops out, says the rezoning-- and this is a staff memo-- "The rezoning of the property will not impact the changes to the zoning ordinance the residents initiated in 2003," which I would believe would be this ordinance that we all received a copy of tonight. So, that would have been-- that action of that rezoning request would have been running concurrently with the entire zoning rewrite. And so, when that statement was put in there, it would seem to indicate to me that the person writing that would have looked at the in-progress one and would have-- either that or looked at the older one. But that was basically messaging out to the public that, "Don't worry about this rezoning. It won't impact the work that you did in 2003." So, I'm hoping someone can speak to that, because that's what that would have told me. If I would have been a person who would have been in 2002 and 2003, would have been pushing hard for this ordinance, whether you liked it or didn't, and that got passed, I would have then seen this 2012 rezoning request and immediately would have wanted to understand the impact to the work I had done a decade before, or roughly. So, that statement would have put me at ease, and I likely would not have come and raised any concerns. So, Mr. Parker, can you speak to that piece?
Can you point me to the document you're referring to?
It's from August 24, 2012. It's the rezoning staff memo that we received in one of the communications that we received from the neighborhood. Did everyone not get that? So, that's going to put you a bit of a disadvantage. I thought we all had the same thing. I can certainly quickly just forward that to you, so it pops up on your machine. Can't look at it now. Trying to do two things with one set of hands, but I will get that here. And that is going off. Kathy, I will CCU and-- sorry, folks, I thought that that had been more widely distributed, but--
CCU has more than one meaning in this form.
All right. That was just sent, and it's on page nine of 16. It's in the second paragraph from the top.
Yep, got it now, and I'm just going there. Staff report for rezoning. So, this was for-- this was a staff report regarding the planned unit development for CCU in 2012? Okay.
Yeah.
And you're looking at--
Page nine of 16, and it's in the second paragraph. It starts with, "The rezoning of the property will not impact the changes to the zoning ordinance the residents initiated in 2003."
So, this is talking about the rezoning of this-- these lots to-- or the entire campus from one PD to another PD?
Yeah. And so, I'm just trying to understand. It seemed to be at that time that there was no impact, and I'm just not connecting all the dots to that. So, I'm wanting to know, how does that impact where we're sitting here tonight with an ordinance that looks like it was sort of undone with the 2012 zoning? I guess I'm just trying to understand those pieces.
So, I'll point you to the following sentence, right under the one that you just read. "Students that choose to live off-campus will still be bound, like any other group of unrelated individuals renting property, to comply with the definition and size requirements provided by the zoning ordinance." So, the limit of five per household still holds and always has held since 2003. And they have to follow the same regulations anyone else does to live and rent property. That said, they can live and rent property.
Okay. Well, I guess the underlying thing that I'm still-- obviously, none of us were here at the time, so it's hard to follow-- is that it seems to be that what was put in place very specifically after a lot of work seems to have gotten undone. And is it only the definition that we're saying is a problem? I guess, like I said, I'm trying to follow all of this train of thought. Is that the only thing that seems to be the issue? Or is there other stuff in this 2003 ordinance that has further been eroded? And I think that's what this study session-- maybe you won't have the answers tonight-- but we've got to understand that I don't want to just fix one thing or consider fixing one thing if there was a lot more work that went into this document and there's other aspects. I guess you following kind of what I'm trying to-- because this is quite a tangled piece here.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, really, in 2003-- prior to 2003, there was no distinction-- even in this document, you can see, there was no distinction between schools and colleges and universities. It was all one big category. And one of the big things that they did in 2003 that is still in effect was separating lower schools from upper schools, or, you know, 12th grade and under, from higher education. That was number one. Number two, they attacked this-- these large student living units with lots of-- you know, dozens, I think, at the time, although I wasn't here again-- by adding this new maximum five unrelated individuals. And that applies citywide. That's now part of our household definition, so anywhere in the city, you can't have more than five unrelated individuals. And the impetus for that was students living in these neighborhoods. And then, the third thing they did was, by specifically pulling apart high schools and elementary schools from higher education, they can prohibit higher education uses in single-family residential zones. And they did, and we still do, right? So, you can't do dormitories, you can't do classrooms, you can't do offices of a university use in the residential neighborhoods. But what I don't believe could have been accomplished by the language that existed before 2012, or can be accomplished by the language post-2012, is to prevent universities from owning properties and uses that any one of us could own and operate. And that's where the distinction is. So, I don't think it's a problem that's cleared up by reinserting the definition. It still doesn't necessarily prevent the university from owning a duplex, which, like I said, anyone in this room or any corporation in this city could do.
Okay. And that speaks to, then, Counselor Skilling's point of maybe ownership isn't the thing, and maybe it turns out it's the control aspect. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, based on what you're saying, your interpretation of the code we have now is that with willing buyers, the university could buy up 300 homes. I'm obviously using an example, but at this point, then, does the comprehensive plan kick in at any point at which we have neighborhood preservation as being a top-line item? And you all know I use that extensively, the person who referenced 2090, so I'm very familiar with that. But how does that work? I mean, I guess there's always a balance with things. Where does that-- where does that line-- is there a line? Or is there always a subjective interpretation of that line?
Well, there are clearly limits to what zoning can do, right? So, if Amazon came to Lakewood and started a plant and wanted to buy 1,000 homes to house its workers, can zoning stop them? Probably not. I mean, Amazon can buy those homes, they can house their workers in them. Those don't become Amazon uses, they're still residential uses, they're just owned by Amazon. And that's what we're talking about here. I think we've reached the limit of what we can legally do with zoning, and we have to look at other tools and other agreements and other methods to work with the university to say, you know, "We, as a community, don't want you to buy this entire neighborhood and take apart what it is and make it into something else." I think zoning is not a tool that can accomplish that.
No, and I appreciate that, and I hope the community appreciates. That's asking the very difficult questions. I mean, you know, not every tool is used for every situation. Certainly want to learn a lot more. Obviously, I've been digging in and talking with folks. I think we may have some follow-up questions once we really kind of peel back the layers of the onion. There may be some additional documents that we need, that we need to see if we can find, which give us some insight into intent around this document, so we kind of understand what might have happened. But thank you, I appreciate all the information.
Mr. Olbier.
Thank you. I just have a couple of-- I guess they're sort of threshold questions. For one, understanding what is allowed under the R2 zoning, I guess I'd have a question about, you know-- would it, for example, the-- outside one of these residences, there was a sign saying "student housing." It's still being used R2, it's still under five unrelated people per dwelling unit, but they're advertising it as student housing. Does that play into our interpretation of the use at all? And similarly, I guess, if they were only renting to students, does that also play into that?
So, you're hypothetical that calling it student housing, whether it is or not?
Right.
You know, there'd be some concerns with reliance on those kinds of statements. And of course, you're limited on the number of signs you can have on your property, that's another story. So, I'm not sure-- it wouldn't dictate what can happen on the property. Zoning regulations would still dictate what can happen on the property. And just for the record, to respond to one of the folks who commented earlier about us referencing a duplex as a use in R2, well, it is. It means two units on a single property, which is not allowed, for example, in R1, but in R2, you can do that. So, it is-- when you talk about single-family versus two-family versus multifamily, those are different categories of uses-- residential uses. So, in this case, you could have a duplex in R2, and whether it says "student housing" on it, or whoever you're renting it to, it shouldn't make a difference. And that's what we're getting to, the impact question. When you-- we talk about the control idea, there may be something there about the control being separate from ownership, but it still comes down to what are the land use impacts? What are the impacts on the surrounding land uses, the other single families, the other duplexes, created by the particular use? And if the impacts are the same-- and I'm not saying they necessarily are-- but if the impacts are exactly the same between a duplex owned by the university and a duplex owned by somebody else, that's where it's difficult to make any kind of distinction. If there is a distinction in the impacts, then that's where regulations can differentiate.
Does that also mean that they-- if they own property, they have to rent to anybody? It's sort of everybody's under-- is that equal protection in that sense? Or they can just allow just students to live in properties that they own?
Obviously, private owners of real property have some discretion on who they want to do business with. There could be problems if those decision-making processes are discriminatory or something like that, but they have more flexibility than a public entity would in that regard. But you're not obligated to enter into a lease agreement with the first person who comes and answers an ad for it, for example. So, you do have flexibility as the owner.
Isn't it common for a lot of cities, though, to also have sort of owner-occupancy-type ordinances that-- ordinances that sort of set the parameters for these type of relationships, whether or not they're picking and choosing very specific groups to rent, or to rent to?
Owner-occupancy, meaning requirements that the owner occupy a dwelling unit or residence? I mean, that comes up when we talk about accessory dwelling units, as we have in the past, as to whether the owner has to reside on the premises, but that's because of the nature of the relationship between the primary resident and the occupant of the accessory units. I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
I was looking for the term of art for it, that I've seen in municipal ordinances, but I guess I'm, I don't think I'm going to hit that one today. But I do just want to bring up, I kind of just did some cursory, you know, looks at other communities, just to kind of get a sense of how a lot of people have addressed this issue. And, well, I don't think this would satisfy a lot of people necessarily, I think it's worth at least taking a look at, or considering the implications of, or at least being a part of the conversation. Seems like, when I was taking a look at Syracuse, and Columbus, and Hartford, and Morgantown, and Ann Arbor, and a lot of other places that have these sort of university residential disputes, seems like a lot of them, it's pretty common to have sort of special neighborhood districts, or additional districts that probably, or that have the potential to have more stringent zoning codes generally, whether it's even less unrelated individuals per unit, or an overlay, or, you know, not allowing group housing, or a maximum floor area ratio, and things like that. So, I just want to throw that out there as a potential, further down the line discussion about other ways to help manage this particular issue. And I'm happy to talk with any of you about some of those things I've seen, but I think that should be at least in some of our thoughts, particularly if we're not able to, you know, find a better way forward. But I just want to kind of put that out there, because I haven't heard that part of the discussion much yet. I think some of what CCU has done is sort of laid some of the groundwork by giving us some of their thoughts on student living units, and so hopefully we can find a path forward, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
I think multiple people probably asked the same questions I was going to ask, but I did want to make one comment. I think Mr. Skilling talked about the control issue. My understanding is that's not associated with the residency, it's associated with the student. So, if you had five unrelated people living someplace that was owned by myself, for instance, it would be driven by the, by CCU, meaning they couldn't still drink, or gamble, or anything in the house, is my understanding, and maybe we need clarification around that. In other words, it's attached to the student, not to the housing. I would also, and I don't know if it's possible to find this out, but we do have Red Rocks, and we do have RemCad. Do we know offhand if any of those own any student housing, or any housing, any property? We don't know. I don't know how, because this has implications for everywhere.
I happen to know that Red Rocks Community College does not own any student housing.
Okay.
And I don't know about RemCad, I'd be afraid to say, I actually just don't know. But I know Red Rocks does not.
All right. I'll let it go.
Okay, I have a few questions and some comments. I believe we requested that staff see how other communities handle this. Mr. LeBure brought that up, and we wanted to know how communities that have non-state colleges and universities handle this. Did you?
I've talked to a few in Colorado and--
Which ones?
A few out of Colorado. Golden.
Golden School of Mines is a state university.
Fair enough.
And as such, not beholden to our regulations.
Fair enough. Well, if they own property outside of their campus, they do have to follow the regulations, as far as I'm aware, but that's my understanding. I have talked to Denver, I've talked to Colorado Springs. The planners that I have talked to said that their primary tool for, in each of these jurisdictions, for regulating student housing is the unrelated persons limit. None of those jurisdictions have any prohibitions on universities owning property.
You know, you're right there. Did you talk with Mr. Ryan Turfer-Tiller in Colorado Springs, their land use manager?
Nope.
Oh, I did. I asked him about ownership, and he said that they don't prohibit colleges or universities from owning property of any kind. They do prohibit student living units in most of their residential districts. In fact, he told me they allow them in multifamily residential districts only. In Pueblo, student living units are confined to the highest-density residential areas, R5 and R6, B3, the business zone, and the central core zone district. In each of those districts even, they require special use permits. To obtain a special use permit, all applicable site plan review worksheets must be submitted, one print of each plan, one print of each site plan, which includes the following requirements: structured setbacks, including those on the periphery of the area, lot width and depth, adequate access to transportation, water supply, waste disposal, fire and police protection, interior circulation, parking and loading zone, screening, fencing, and landscaping, along with current, within 30 days, title insurance or title commitment, and all applicable site plan worksheets. Also, something called a photometric plan, do you know what that is?
Light, the impacts of light on the property.
Thank you. I didn't know what it was. Also, Denver. Ms. Kettner quoted the Denver ordinance definition of student housing quite adequately, "A structure used for long-term group residential accommodations for students of a college, university, or seminary, and where such structure is related to the college, university, or seminary." That pretty much fits with our former definition of student living units, which was housing for students controlled, owned or controlled by the university. Ours was much more brief and easier to understand. It seems to me the definition of student living unit is what all of this conversation centers around. As far as ownership, JFCO schools can own property in any residential district, is that true? Mr. Parker?
I don't see any reason why not.
Well, our code specifically allows K through 12 school, public schools, to operate in any zone district.
Correct.
Right. So, they could have classrooms in operation in any zone district. Can CCU have classrooms in any zone district?
They cannot.
So, we have restrictions on use for universities and colleges that don't apply to other folks, at least to the public schools.
CCU could own an elementary school and--
They could own it, but they couldn't have college classes there, could they?
They could have elementary classes.
Exactly. Not a college or university use. K through 12 classrooms are not considered a college or university use. And yet, our zoning ordinance still lists student living units as a college or university use. And in the R3 district, university uses are not allowed, according to our table. As far as religious use practices, what was legal in 2003 is legal still. Is that correct, Mr. Cox?
I wouldn't state it that way, because there have been changes in the law as interpreted by the courts.
Yes, but none of them involve off-campus student housing.
I can't answer that question.
We were talking about the status quo earlier, as if the status quo allows student living units in residential areas. The status quo is that, just what I just brought up, that our use table says no, and student living units are considered a college and university use. And as such, the status quo would say that they're not allowed in our R3 district. In 2012, the university, among other things, moved to rezone the west side of Cody Court in order to permit the use of those duplexes they bought there for student living units. It seemed to me that the answer, right now, is we need to protect the integrity of our zoning code, and if the university wants to change the uses on the west side, they're more than welcome to come to us with an application for rezoning that portion of the street. Instead, they're coming to us with the unspoken threat of suing us if we don't allow the use they want to have despite the clear regulations, to me, in our zoning ordinance. I would encourage them to do so if they want to populate the west side of Cody Court with student living units. I believe there are some grandfathered properties that CCU has on Garrison Street. Are you aware of that, Mr. Parker?
On Garrison--
On Garrison Street, they have a music center over there.
That's familiar.
I believe the zoning grandfathered those, to allow their continued use even though university uses were not allowed on that side of Garrison. Is anything grandfathered on the west side, the east side of Cody Court?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. So there are other remedies available that would keep the integrity of our zoning ordinance I requested some information about the opinion of our city attorney in 2003, Mr. Noonan. That was not provided, but the plain language in the ordinance, and I asked this afternoon if we could have a copy for each of us on council. I would like to have had it sooner, so we could have studied more clearly, but Mr. Noonan's signature on this ordinance dated June 30, 2003, shows that he approved it as to form. Among the other verbiage in this is that there is an effect on, an impact on residential areas. Such impacts may include, according to the wording, "may include but are not limited to a higher incidence of noise, greater numbers of vehicles for residential dwelling unit, higher demands for on-street parking, greater street activity during evening and early morning hours, higher-than-normal incidence of transient occupants, and lower standards of maintenance of residents' yard and landscaping, leading to a degradation in the character of residential neighborhoods." These impacts, it says, "are deemed inconsistent or incompatible with typical single-family household and lower-density residential neighborhoods, and such impacts are better suited for higher-density residential areas, or other zone districts more suitable for university and college uses." I don't believe any of that's changed in the last, in the intervening years. So, my suggestion, and what the discussion seems to center around, is, as Ms. Johnson said, is the definition of student living units, which was removed. I've had three different stories about how it got removed from the ordinance, one that it was inadvertent, one that it was, that it was no longer needed, and now we hear that city council wrote it out of the ordinance. I would suggest that we move forward by restoring a definition of student living units. I would like to see the previous definition reinstated, and put into the definitions in our zoning ordinance. I would suggest that we move it along to a public hearing with that very, very goal. However, at a public hearing, we could debate on how we want to redefine it, if we do. I don't believe we want to define it in order to exceed our number of residential, unrelated people in a residential dwelling, but it would be my request that that be our course of action. With that, we can start a second round here. Mr. Abida would like to speak again.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Let me first start by saying that-- Oh, I'm just having trouble with that button. Let me first start by saying that I want to thank Colorado Christian University for everything that they do for our community, and the contributions that they make to our community, and they are not unnoticed or unrecognized, I want you to know that. Particularly, I want to focus a little bit on the students that we heard tonight, and how, in my experience, they really typify the students that I run into all over this community, who are students at CCU. I run into them all the time, in the stores, the restaurants, different business establishments where they're working, to help put themselves through school. And to a person, number one, they stand out as being outstanding individuals, they're friendly, they're smart, they're helpful, so I really appreciate that. And what's even more important is, I know for a fact that many of them, after they graduate, because they like Lakewood, they end up staying here and settling into Lakewood, and becoming part of our community. And I know that for a fact. I also know for a fact that they often volunteer for voluntary positions on our numerous boards and commissions with the city. We interview them all the time, and they volunteer to help serve the city. They also do services in the community in terms of food, volunteering at food banks, and many of those things. So, I'm well aware of those things, and that's all because of the culture that the university teaches them, and the kind of people they are. So, those are great contributions. So any decision we make, I want to make sure that it's clear that has no implication as far as certainly my feeling as to the university and what it does for this community. But we've been faced, we are now faced with a decision here that we really shouldn't have to deal with. This is, we know this has been going on since at least 2003, this issue, and probably sometime before that, which culminated in the agreement between the-- that, which culminated in the agreement between the university, the neighborhood, and, as I understand, the city, to pass that ordinance that took place in 2003. So, we're now talking about something that's going on for approximately 20 years. And here it is, still dumped back in our lap tonight to deal with. We know that back in 2003, we passed an ordinance that limited the university's ability to use these residences, these duplexes, and other types of residential units for student housing purposes. We know that. That was in spite of the fact that the law that's been cited tonight as possible violation is this religious land use law. That was in place, even at that time, that didn't seem to detour. The university was going with this kind of an approach. They went with it for the next, what, seven, eight years, nine years, until the zoning laws were changed in 2012, which more or less relieved them of the agreement that they had entered into with the neighborhood. Those are things where I think we're pretty certain that took place. Then in 2012, we have this change in the ordinance, this key provision that defines student housing was dropped from the housing, I mean, from the zoning ordinances. I think it was done without, it appears to me that it was done without the knowledge of council. I know there were a lot of other things going on with that zoning issue, but I think it should have been made where a council, because I think people knew or should have known that this was going to be an issue. It had already been brewing for some 12 years or more, and for this to be left out at that time, this crucial language has, should have been known that this was going to create a problem, and it was going to come up, and that somebody was going to have to deal with it again, which is exactly what we're doing tonight. So, this is what we know. And I think we also know that probably, as Councilor Johnson has said, probably no matter what we do, this may well end up in litigation. And maybe that's where it belongs ultimately, because there is such a tangled web here that goes on, and who said who, and who said what, and so forth and so on. And it's really not our position to sit here as a court of law tonight and try and make that determination. But I do think that it's proper for us to look at this, given the history that's occurred, and rather than trying to come up with some solution that's going to solve this, is to return the parties to the position that they agreed to many years ago, and which there has really been no change in the law that I can hear or see. So, I think the most fair and provident thing to do is to return the parties to what they agreed to back in 2003, and which was fine until 2012, when it was improvidently dropped from our zoning rules. And that's the suggestion that Council, Councilor Ramey has made, and Councilor Abel as well, which is return that language. And I believe we're talking specifically the definition of a student dwelling unit, a dwelling unit that is owned or controlled by a college and university and inhabited by students who are related or unrelated. I think that's what we're talking about. I think it needs to be restored forthwith to our zoning rules. And I would be in favor of tonight, taking a vote from council, and if there's sufficient support for that, to instruct our staff and our council to rewrite that ordinance forthwith, bring it to a first reading as soon as legally permissible under our notice rules, and get this thing moving. So, that would be my preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skilling?
I think we've exhausted tonight the on-the-fly questions to staff. If there's further questions, I suggest in between now and the time that the ordinance comes before us for second reading, we submit those questions, and we discuss those as part of the debate when that ordinance comes before us, so the public can hear. The most important thing tonight was to hear from the public, hear some of the bigger issues we heard from CCU. We've heard, but I think at this point, we've kind of exhausted what I think is fair to staff to ask off the top of our heads, and they need time to provide those answers, if any remain. I agree with Councilor Bida and Councilor Abel and everyone who said, if the decision is, if there's consent among here to bring that type of ordinance, and if folks have amendments or want to change it, or whatever they want to do, let's just move on. But I think at this point, we've exhausted this study session. But I would agree, let's move forward, see if there's consent to do that.
Unexpectedly, I agree with you. I would like to echo Mr. Bida's sentiment that the students at CCU are exceptional, and they're great members of our community. Ms. Johnson and I had the privilege of addressing a government class at CCU a couple of years ago, and there were a dozen or so students in the class. Ten of them were registered voters in Lakewood. And there's nothing better than your buy-in to our community, and we welcome you here. You are an exemplary group of students, and I don't think we have many police calls to your dorms or other residences. And when I drive down Alameda near the school, you folks yield right away when you're pulling out. That doesn't happen in Boulder, I'll tell you. So, thank you very much for choosing to go to school here. We appreciate CCU's participation in our community, and I would now ask for consensus to move this forward, to restore the definition of student living units to our zoning ordinance. Do I have consensus on that? Absolutely. So, let's start with restoring the previous language. Bring it forward to us. Ms. Hodgson, any idea of when we could schedule that?
Just as soon as we can. We'll work up the language and get it to you in first reading, and then it'll take two weeks, obviously, for second reading and the public hearing, and then it'll be effective. So, just to be clear, we'll be adding the definition, student living unit, a dwelling unit that is owned or controlled by a college and university and inhabited by students who are related or unrelated.
College or university, I think. But that'll give us-
It says "and" in-
Does it?
It says "by a college and university and inhabited by students who are related or unrelated."
I don't know of any colleges that are also universities. So, I would say are, but we can debate that along with the rest of the language, and we know telling what definition we're going to come up with, but it will give us a good starting point.
All right. So, I'll take it just as it is, and if you want to make that change, you can do that at second reading.
Okay. By definition, a university is a group of colleges within a single entity, and a college is one discipline for itself.
Can I take this moment to make one comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, I spoke to our police chief today, and he made it really clear, and I'd like for the audience to hear, that our police department consider CCU a really good neighbor and a really good partner to all of us. And that says a lot in times of really tough times with our police department. So, we really value our relationship with CCU, and we'll continue to do so. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add, if there's any additions or deletions to the use table, too, when you bring that back, just so in case any of the Ps or anything that needs to be changed in the zoning itself, unrelated to just the definition, just make sure we cross it, so that we're not spending time here on the fly, working on any red lines that may or may not need to happen. Just throwing that in there.
Ms. Springsteen?
And I was just going to add earlier, in reading back through the memo from July 2, again, it just would be helpful to have citations and more understanding of how conclusions get reached, and what Councilman Abel said about examples and comparisons, anything that we can have as city council members on both sides of the equation, not just one, to help us make decisions and understand the issue better, and how recommendations are being made would be very helpful. So.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, thank you. And now reports. Friday night is tree lighting at the park. We'd like to invite everyone there to see Santa and the council members who might wish to appear. And unfortunately, the Mayor Protem will be leading those ceremonies as well, hopefully a lot more smoothly than tonight went. So, thank you very much for your participation, everyone.
Mayor Protem, can I add a little more?
Absolutely.
A little more facts to that? So, the tree lighting is actually at Liquid Heritage Center, just to make sure people come to the right place, at 5:30 to 8:30. And the ceremony will be at the gazebo, and we would love to have everyone there. So, this is tree lighting at Lakewood Lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Springsteen, any report?
No report right now.
Mr. Skilling? Mr. LeBure?
Sure, I'll just mention tomorrow, Sheriff, Councilor Vincent, and I will be at the Oakane House lighting ceremony, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I encourage you all to be there and bring your cameras. I will be singing, so look forward to that. Thank you.
Bring your tape for Carter's, too. Ms. Vincent?
I appreciate the fact that evidently I can be in two places at once, but I will actually be interviewing people for boards and commissions tomorrow. And then the Two Creeks Christmas lighting contest, get your entries in, is the 10th of December. And I have a question for our meeting on the 16th. As we talk about the 200 implementation, what can be done? We've had some outreach on motels now that might have an interest in changing to, I guess you'd call them micro-apartments. That's a business, and then what does it do? And we're going to need some information around that, because it can come to us. So, okay, thank you.
No report. No report. Ms. Johnson?
No report.
Ms. Franks? Ms. Harrison?
Just a reminder to those who might want to go to Ward 5, don't. We are, it would be this Saturday. We are not, we are not having our December meeting, so go and enjoy the tree lighting and all the other fun things, and we'll see you in January. Thank you.
And our Ward 1 constituents also have no meeting to attend Saturday, so happy holidays, everyone. Anything else? Ms. Hodgson? Mr. Cox? Ms. Mallard? Well, then, for the good of the order, and I'd like everybody to notice that my meeting is adjourned at 9:40 p.m. Thank you.